Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education regularly scheduled work session tonight for August the 5th, 2013. I hope everybody had a good vacation and everybody's ready to go back to work, get their sleeves all rolled up, and get started, and just like we're getting ready to do here with our meeting. And so what we'd like to do at this time is call the meeting to order for tonight's meeting. And the first thing on the agenda, we lost one of our teachers on June 30th of this year, Ms. Stacy Avalon, Azalon, and so we would like to have a moment of silence in her remembrance if you'd all take this a minute. Okay, the first item on our agenda tonight is to set the agenda. Do I have a motion that the agenda be approved as presented to us?
So I would, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make an amendment to the agenda. I have a draft resolution I think's been circulated on the North Carolina State Budget for school year 2013-2014 that I'd like to have discussed.
Okay, Mr. Phillips, we'll be glad to put that before the board. Do I have a second to Jeff's motion to do this resolution on the North Carolina State Budget? Mr. Harrison, second it?
Thanks.
All those in favor say aye. Aye, anybody opposed? Okay, we'll add this to, this will be 5.10 on the items for discussion. And Mr. Phillips, I'll ask you at that time to handle that particular item when we get down that line. Okay, the next item on our agenda here is the reports section, and I'd like to have Ms. Kelly Klutz to come to the podium, and she's going to talk with us about the QSCB financial update. And so when you're ready, we're ready.
Good evening. We have pretty much no activity on the financial report. Things are moving along on the status, and Mr. Wickie will give you the status, but I'll just ask if you have any questions. There were no budget amendments needed necessary this month, and everything is pretty much encumbered and ready to go. Do you have any questions on the financial report?
Any questions from the board on the QSCB projects? Hearing none? Thank you, Ms. Klutz.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to our next item. Let me close this out, that was quick. The next item is also QSCB, the milestones report, and we got Mr. Wickie at the podium to give us the milestone report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. In looking at the milestone report, the Central Cabarrus High School Windows and Doors Project, it continues to be 99%. We did take one step forward. We did receive news from the architect that the general contractor for the project has finally submitted his last request for payment. So we are in the process of acquiring quotes from a contractor to do the remaining work that is necessary there for the punch list to be closed out. And once we have that work done and in place, we will close out and settle with the general contractor on that basis. Gym addition at Northwest Cabarrus High School is going along very well. As you can tell, this is a dated document simply because of the process that's involved in getting the information posted. But I will say that we've talked with the contractor, we meet weekly, and we, as an example, the gym floor is now in place. This week, they'll be staining portions of it and starting to set the bleachers in place. They've got a lot of the finish work going on in the addition, and of course, a lot of the finish work throughout the gym as a total. The HVAC unit in the auditorium is also set, and they're working on the controls portion of that project at this time. So the, I keep asking, you know, are we going to make the due date? And he said, you know, God willing, and it doesn't rain much more. And I think what he's referring to is they're moving along very well in the building. It's the outdoor work, the paving work and all. It remains a swamp at this point until it dries out. So we may be walking on temporary materials for a while, but we will have access to the building. At least that's their relief at this time. The Kitchen Hood Project at Colton Webb, as you know, is funded now through our operating budget funds, and that project is well in its way, and actually nearly complete at this time. The boiler replacement at Mount Pleasant High School is also, it's under contract. Parts or equipment are being ordered now, and we hope for that work to be completed by mid-September. Concord High School weight room unfortunately has fallen prey to wet weather as well. They were going to attempt to place the concrete slab so they can begin their above-floor masonry work. So we've had good weather, we're hoping that the dryness stays with us, and they can continue with that work and continue to meet their schedule. They are behind, I would say, right now, but the type of construction it is, it'll move quickly, and we hope to catch up with the schedule. The various school breaker panels, that work is complete. We are waiting for the final pay application from the contractor. J and Fries Roof Project, those contracts just went to the contractor today, and we expect those to be executed, excuse me, executed this week, and work to begin shortly thereafter. And that's it for the active projects. May I take any questions?
Okay, board members, do you have any questions to Mr. Wickie on the miles, QSCB milestones?
I've got just briefly, thank you, Lynn. Go back to Northwest Gym. So the, I understand you said something about the documents hard to update. So the 57% is wrong, or the date's wrong?
No, I would say the 50%, 57% is low.
All right, gotcha. So when you've talked to him about the completion date, his date is the August 30th date?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, do we know, well, we may not, and it may not matter, but if we have volleyball games scheduled in there for this fall, and does the contractor know that? And do we know what, the 30th's fine, but that really probably is the hardest line, deadline that would be out in front of him.
Yes, and I, you know, I know that he and Mike Jolly talk about this literally every week. I know there's a little wiggle room with the date, but not much. The basic concept was that they should focus on the gymnasium so it's ready. The locker rooms and everything else are kind of taking a backseat to it, so.
Okay, gotcha.
Okay, board members, any other questions? Mr. Walker?
Is that, was that on the J and Fries partial roof replacement on the comments section there, is that accurate, or is that just needed to be updated?
That needs to be updated. We were waiting, actually, it should have been BOC approval on the funding change, and that has taken place last month, and we are moving forward with the project, so.
Okay, and the other question was, are any of these projects, because of the weather, has extended the completion date?
Well, because Holden is the contractor for both of the main construction projects at the gym, I call them the gym projects, the one at Northwest and the one at Concord High School. Those projects, they have really said they're not going to let that stop them if it possibly can be avoided. They've, as a good example, at Northwest Gym, they've been working seven days a week. And I know the flooring people were putting in 12 to 14-hour days. So they're all, there's a great group of contractors on that site, and they're working very hard, so. They believe they can make the date.
Okay, that's all right. Board members, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Wickie. Looks like everything's good to go.
You're welcome.
And you know, before we move on to the next item here, and I forgot something that I wanted to make mention of in the beginning of the meeting, and that is, we've got a new face on our board tonight. I don't know whether you've noticed it or not, but we've got Ms. Courtney Smith with us tonight. She's our new teacher liaison, and we're glad to have you with us tonight, Courtney. I can't remember what school that you came out of, but it had to be one of ours. It had to be one of ours, the best.
And she was here in July and offered up a couple of good opinions and some analysis of some of the things that we were talking about.
Well, I told her that was dress rehearsal since I wasn't here. Okay, well, anyway, we're glad to have you with us, Courtney, and, because as you know, I was vacating this time, July, the first meeting. So anyway, let's move on to the next item, and we'll have this, the budget status, and it will be the plan for teacher assistants, and we need Ms. Kelly Klutz and Ms. Kathy Auger back up at the podium.
Good evening, again. Ms. Auger and I need to give you the budget update status, and we know that your primary concern is teacher assistance. So I want to give you a general overview of the highlights of the budget, and then we're going to talk in detail about our teacher assistants, and if you have questions about those. So we'll start with the general overall budget outlook. The budget was passed recently, and it included the following items. There were, there was the elimination of the discretionary reversion, but there was a direct offset cut to classroom teachers, instructional support, and classroom instructional supplies. For Cabarrus County Schools, that's approximately 111 teachers if we were to make that direct cut to teachers. Teacher assistant cut was a direct cut, not a part of the discretionary reversion. This was 120 positions for Cabarrus County Schools, and we eliminated 142 positions during the RIF, so we're going to recommend and talk with you about adding back 22 positions to our system. Textbook funding was not restored in this budget. It was cut in a previous budget, was not restored. That means that we are operating on a 25% of the original allotment, which if you want to reverse those and talk about the negative, there's a 75% reduction to textbooks for you. Instructional supply funding was not restored either. We're operating on 50% of the original allotment for instructional supplies. Driver's education funding was reduced. We may increase the fee to the student and the parent to $55 from 40 to 55, and we are recommending that we do that. There were no pay increases for staff in fiscal year 1314. There was the elimination of the master's pay beginning in fiscal year 1415. There is the elimination of teacher tenure in this budget. There's a reduction of LEP teachers and funding, and that's limited English proficiency. For Cabarrus County Schools, that's two positions. At the end of this presentation, I want to make a recommendation to the board, and it'll include the following, so that what I can do is take the information that we present to you today and prepare it in a formal budget resolution so that we can adopt a budget in September. So I need, at the end of the day, I would like to have general consensus on how the board feels, and so that we're moving forward, and as I'm preparing the budget resolution, we're preparing the right document, okay? So at the end of the day, what we want to do is, our recommendation is that we restore 22 teacher assistants. We would also like to continue our plan to leave previous cuts in place undisturbed, so that, in an effort to maintain 111 teaching positions in our system. We need to reduce two LEP positions, and we need to increase the driver's education fee to $55. So those are the primary changes, and now we'll talk about the TAs in detail, and I'll turn that over to Kathy for just a moment.
Good evening. Want to bring you up to date on our teacher assistance. As Kelly said, our plan is to recommend that 22 teacher assistants be returned to the classroom for the opening of school. In addition to restoring 22 positions, we have also rehired 21 of the impacted teacher assistants and other types of vacant positions since the reduction in force. The positions into which former TAs have been hired for 201314 include three clerical receptionists and one combined clerical and part-time teacher assistant, 11 bus drivers, two teachers, two full-time and one part-time TA, and one ECTA, and one family advocate. In addition, we have approximately 15 other teacher assistants who attended our effective teacher training last week, which we offered free of charge to our teacher assistants, and they are now prepared to be substitute teachers for us when school opens. While the number of positions restored is less than desired overall, we are excited to have 22 positions back, as well as being excited about our district and teacher assistants mutually benefiting from a number of employment opportunities that they're still pursuing and that we are being able to hire them into.
Mr. Chairman, not to interrupt Kathy, but could you, the first two numbers you gave us, can you just repeat those? I was trying to write them down, and I missed.
Sure. Restoring 22 positions, and then we've rehired 21 since the RIF. And then 15 more are trained to be substitutes when we open.
Thank you, Ms. Auger and Ms. Klutz, for those, for that report. Board members, I know you probably got some questions, and we need to go ahead and get those out of the way here. And so I guess we'll start on Mr. Phillips. We'll start with you, and if you got you some questions there, and keep in mind, we've got a rather lengthy agenda tonight, so just keep in mind that there's other board members that may have questions as well. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Okay. So with hiring back 22, how many teacher assistant positions will we have in the district?
So that brings us to 116 total TA allotments.
116, okay. And then I believe we have about, was it 110, somewhere around there, kindergarten classes? What is the total?
109.
109. So we've got 109 kindergarten classes, and then I think we have a similar number of first grade classes, maybe a few more?
124.
124 first grade. So obviously, with 124 first grade, 109 kindergarten classes, and 116 teacher assistants, we can't have one teacher assistant in each of the first grade classes and kindergarten classes. How are they going to be distributed?
They're distributed a formula base. We take the K1 enrollment, and for every school, we take it and allocate it based on the number, the funding that we have available. So if we have $4 million and a TA costs approximately, on average, $25,000, you determine the number of positions that we have, and then it's strictly based on the enrollment of each school allocated on a formula.
The kindergarten first grade enrollment, or the overall enrollment?
We've allocated based on kindergarten 1, and they're, they may use them for kindergarten 3, although we know that that is probably not going to happen based on the number that they're allocated. But they're eligible to.
Now, I know that when we did the reduction in force, we said that we would group all of the TAs together and rank them, and then the ones that were the top rated, we kept, and the ones that were below, whatever we had to make the cut, were let go. But because of that, there were disproportionately more TAs that were taken from one school than from another, in some cases. It wasn't necessarily of, you know, everybody lost 60% of their TAs. Has there been a rebalancing since that cut to make sure that we have this proportionate number of TAs in each school?
The cuts were actually done by school. So within a school, we determined the number that needed to be reduced, and they were reduced within that school so that we did not have extensive reassignment of teacher assistants throughout the district.
Okay, I'd like to see some documentation of that, because that goes against the feedback that I've been receiving, that some schools had dramatically more reductions than others.
It should be the same based on the formula for K3 assistance. It's possible that a change was made perhaps, and I would have to know about Title I funding or some other funding type, but in terms of K3 assistance, it should be according to the formula.
That would take in consideration too EC and Title I, which are separate pots of money, is that right?
They are separate parts, pots of money.
That's right, so whereas one school may have three EC teachers, and one, the other one may only have one hypothetically. Obviously, I don't know what we have, but you have to take that in consideration also. Mr. Phillips, did you have all your questions answered there?
Well, I have another one, but I'll see if somebody else asks them first. I don't want to hog all the time.
All right, that's fine. Mr. Harrison, do you have any questions for Ms. Auger and Ms. Klutz?
Um, no questions at this time.
Okay, Mr. Walter?
I think it's great that we went through the effort to keep as many of these teachers assistants within our system as we could. That's 21 rehires and 15 substitute teachers, that's a pretty good number. My question is, now that we're opening up to hire them back, these folks here that we've hired, if they want to go back to the classroom, do they have that option?
If a principal recommends one of them for teacher assistant position, generally, we would give the teacher assistant a choice of which they would prefer to do.
Okay. I'll also come back.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Keiger?
You guys are holding all your questions in your pocket down there. I think Mr. Phillips asked this, but I was glancing at another piece of paper, so I apologize if I'm re-asking something, but of the 22 that we're bringing back, how is that allocation made of deciding where they're going? Can you just, I think you already answered that, but can you just answer that again, please?
It's strictly formula-based. So we had 22 positions. You put the ADM for K1 into the formula, and it's just allocated strictly based on that school's enrollment. So a smaller school would most likely have one teacher assistant added. A larger school like Cox Mill may have two or three. It's strictly formula-based.
Okay, and that includes the EC classes, or does not include the EC classes?
It does not include. Is EC, Title I at risk? Any of those type things would be excluded, because we are required to supplement with EC funding and Title I funding, and we cannot consider those things in this formula, and we do not.
Okay, so we will not have an EC class without an assistant, is what I understand?
That's correct.
Okay. Good. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. Ms. Carpenter?
So you're saying these are just regular, these are no EC, or this is just regular teachers? And maybe it's too soon at this point, and that's why these other fellows are holding off on their questions, and maybe I should do the same thing, because mine basically are going to be saying, okay, have we looked at any other alternative, alternative fundings, alternative things to this? Because we're way off on the numbers, and so maybe I'll hold my questions, because mine are for alternatives, so I'll hold off.
Well, the thing is, the thing is, somebody's going to have to speak your questions, you can't all wait. Now, Mr. Shoemaker, do you have any questions?
I have a lot of questions, and I have some comments. First off, my first comment is, we performed a RIF back in May, which I believe was a compassionate activity. When you look at what we're going through right now to try to bring folks back in, we would have been giving notices probably after this, after the meeting next Monday, as to who we would be riffing for the year, which would have created a huge amount of upset, uneasiness in our school system just on the eve of getting ready to start. So I think that if you look back, I think we made the right decision as a board to do the RIF in May with the information that we had, and then coming back and trying to readjust accordingly, rather than trying to go ahead and do the RIF in the middle of the summer and jumping through hoops, because a lot of people would have been unsettled, and it would have been hard to get everyone into the right positions at the time. So my comment. I sent you a number of questions today, and so I'm going to kind of go back through those. Excuse me. You said that the state just basically does a dollar amount, and it's based on the LEA, and they take the K3 enrollment, and then they just do some parsing with percentages and give you an allotment based on what they figure the K1 is going to be out of the K3?
And generally, we're 2% of the state's budget, so if you want to look at a state number and do a round estimate, if you take 2%, you're going to come pretty close to what our allotment is, and that's how they get the number. Theirs is exact.
Okay. Now, in the, in the state budget, in the, on the final version, they cut 110 million for TAs. And you stated to me in here that it was recurring, and then there was an additional 10 million of non-recurring. Can you help me understand? Because that's 120 million, not 100, and so there's a little difference there, because we were looking at 142 million originally, and that's what we based our RIF on. Was there any non-recurring money in that 142 million that we originally looked at from the Senate budget?
No, the amount that we based the 142 on increased the second year from the first year. So there would have been a smaller amount of cuts. The first year, and it was not as significant, the number was only several positions more in the second year. We thought it was prudent to go ahead and make those decisions and take care of our budget in the first year, knowing that it was going to increase, the cut was going to increase the following year. Same here, we have 120 million together in the cut, and so we're preparing for the entire cuts. We do not want this board or our system to have to go through another RIF next year. This is non-recurring.
So let me just mirror back, make sure I've accurately understood. The 110 million recurring, that was for 1314?
1314.
The 10 million non-recurring is for 1415?
It's in there. It doesn't, doesn't mean that it's going to stay as a, as a cut. It could come back to us. So we could increase the number of positions.
Right, so the, but the 10 million is the wild card at this point, and you're basing the rehire of 22 TAs based on these two numbers together, and then a 2% of the total of those then gives you the?
I'm being conservative. If we, if it remains non-recurring, and we get additional dollars for TAs, then we'll hire them at that time, not right now.
Okay, because I believe a lot of the folks on this board, I know me in particular, had based my funding on the delta between the 142 and the 110, and then did a calculation, and it came out to 27% or 28 or 29%. But now that you throw the 10 million on top of that, which you're also using in your calculation, then that does change that percentage number a little bit.
A little bit.
And how much did that change that percentage? What does that come out to? Is that the 21% that you were talking about, I think?
I'm not sure what the 10 million does to it exactly. I didn't figure that. What I think that has the most significant change that you're seeing is that when we figured the cut based on the 142 million, we did an average salary of our teacher assistants on staff at that time. At that time, it was approximately $21,000. So then we did a RIF for 142 teacher assistants. What happened is we eliminated the lower-paid newer teacher assistants. And when you remove 142 staff off of your payroll, what happens is the average salary for that teacher assistant allocation goes up. So it went up to almost $26,000, $5,000 per position. So every five positions that you add, you've lost one, just because we're paying them higher, and we're reacquiring, most likely, we're reacquiring the next position in the, in the picking list that has the most experience, and you're going to pay them more, so our average salary is going to be higher. Now, I've accounted for that. So that's why your numbers changed a little bit. You have that $10 million that impacted you, and you also have that $5,000 per position. It also includes increase in health insurance, and also includes an increase in retirement. So that, that's why your numbers are changing a little bit.
Okay, so basically, the folks that would be rehired back in, the employees that would be rehired, would come in at a higher average rate because of the seniority of the tenure with, with the school system, and basically, the, for the most part, most of the folks that were in the 129-person, 142-position RIF, those individuals, as a group, averaged out lower cost, because there was a lot of less senior people in there. Not that we do seniorities exclusively, I know that, but, you know, we're trying to make sure we retain the highest performing folks as we can possibly get. All right, my machine keeps cutting off. All right, so right now, it looks like we're going to hire in these additional 22, that's what you're recommending, and that will give us a 1 to 2 ratio, or 1 TA per 2 classes ratio. Now, is that? Now, is that the formula you're going to use at each of the schools? And then, as a corollary to that, we do have Title I, and we do have EC. However, no class is a full Title I class. Title I is based on the free introduced lunch. Will we see more TAs in a Title I school versus a non-Title I school?
That would depend on the manner in which the Title I funding was spent within that school. And there's extensive research and work with the curriculum department on the specific needs of that school, the instructional needs that are present.
So are the TAs that do Title I, do they do the exact same things as non-Title I TAs?
It's a, and you can come up if you want to, Jason. It's a school...
We're just trying to weigh through this and...
Do you wanna speak to that, since it's Title I?
I would say in general, your Title I money is spent in two ways. One is for certified teachers to lower class size, and two is for tutors. Contract tutors are paid hourly to come in and tutor children one-on-one or in small groups. So we do pay for some TAs that are more traditional TAs, like our regular TAs, but very little from Title I money.
And I'll just add, our schools that are deemed Title I in our system are called school-wide Title I schools, which means that you can use Title I funds within that school. It's not, this student is a Title I student, and I have to teach this student. We can use it within the school, and that's just the regulations and guidelines with Title I. There are some schools sometimes that are targeted assistants. And if they're targeted, then you do have that direct connection to that teacher or that student. But because we're school-wide, we can use those resources within that school.
Okay. Yeah. You sent me a chart here, and I just caught it up on the average difference between the average salary as of May 2013 versus the average salary in July 2013. It's like a 25, maybe almost a 30% difference in the average salary. So that definitely will water down the money that we would get. Now, one of the things that you also responded to a question that I asked was, will TA dollars be used to hire any teachers, and if so, how many?
If you want me to answer that.
So you responded to me that the TA money will be used to avoid riffing 111 teachers. Can you kinda explain to us exactly what that looks like, and did we actually have 111 teachers' jobs on the line? Were we looking at that as a possibility as a result of this budget?
We were not. We had a plan three years ago as we were going through this crisis and this process. As we ranked our priorities and our system goals, they were clear, and teachers were at the very bottom. We wanted to protect teachers, and we wanted to protect class size, and that was really important to us. And so every cut that we made was about protecting the classroom. And so we did that. So we continued that same plan and that same theme every year. So we went through two years of budget process and budget cuts. So the first year, we made those cuts in order of priority. The second year, we reflected on those cuts, and we said, were those good ideas, and could we have done anything different? And we said, no, we made really good decisions, and this is what we wanna do. Again, this year, now we're in the same position. The state said, we're not gonna take money from you in the discretionary reversion, but we're gonna place those cuts for you, and we're gonna place them in teachers. Now, we decided not to do that. We decided to protect the classroom. So now, at this point, we can eliminate or riff teaching positions and replace TA positions. But that is not the recommendation. We do not wanna increase our class size to put teacher assistants back into the classroom.
So you're looking at maintaining a flat hire on your teacher population?
Mm-hmm.
So we're gonna remain flat on our headcount there?
It's keeping what we have.
And then, on the TAs, we're looking at adding back 22 to the 142 positions that were eliminated. Actually, out of 129 people, 22 will receive their jobs, or something like that. Okay. So I just wanna make sure I understood that. All right. Thank you. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. That was some excellent answers, Ms. Clutz. Thank you. Board members, a couple of you didn't have anything to say earlier. We'll start on Mr. Phillips' side once again. We'll go around and let's knock this out.
Right. Sorry for remembering some things I was gonna add. So following up on Barry's question about using the TA money to protect teachers, the number of the 116 TA positions, that's before we give principals discretion on whether to convert some of those positions to lead teachers? Is that the only discretion that we give them?
That is correct. The only option that they have in working with their positions in a school level, besides, let me take that back, clerical and custodial, they can make some changes, increase their clerical, decrease their custodial, that kinda thing. But as far as teaching staff and teacher assistants, that's the only option that they have. They can trade in two and a half TA positions for a lead teacher in the school, and that is in cooperation and correlation with their school improvement team.
Okay. So I know in the past, they have done that, so I assume that this year, that will also be done. So we'll actually have less than 116 teacher assistants, which means that there's, again, no way we can have one in every kindergarten classroom. Is that correct?
We did a quick survey with our staff this morning, and we have eight lead teachers in those positions. We had 13 and a half last year, something like that. So we will be converting 20 TA positions.
Okay. And, you know, I certainly respect the decisions of the previous boards to protect teaching positions and class size over teacher assistants, but I've received feedback from at least, you know, a couple current kindergarten teachers who have said, I would rather have a larger class and a teacher assistant than to not have a teacher assistant. And so I'm wondering if at that level alone, only at kindergarten, do we have the flexibility to allow class size to increase? Or does the state mandate you can't go above a certain number?
The state does mandate that we can't go above a certain number. And we do support the schools and their choice to make those decisions with the school improvement plan. We also hold principals accountable for the results. So if they make a decision, they think it's in the best effort, in the best interest of their school and their students, to have that lead teacher versus the two TA, two and a half TAs, then we support that. But we also hold them accountable at the end of the day.
Okay. Another question I had was in regards to the teacher assistants for exceptional children. When we passed the RIF, I was not aware, maybe I should have read it more closely, that some of the EC teacher assistants were going to be considered for the reduction enforcement. In fact, some of them were let go, even though, as I understand it, the number of exceptional children TA positions was not reduced. And what we have done instead is that we have moved some of the traditional teaching assistants into this EC role, which I don't agree with. I think that that takes a completely different set of skills, or maybe not completely different, but certainly a different set of skills. And I would hope that as part of this hiring back of the 22, that we put the people who were originally in EC TA positions back in those positions, and move the traditional TAs from traditional classroom positions back into the traditional classroom positions, rather than asking them to take on a new role. That was certainly not what I was, thought I was voting for back in June or May. And then my final thing is that I'm on Governor McCrory's mailing list. I may not be after today's meeting. But the last one that I got from him was last week after the budget was passed, and it was summarizing the budget. And it said, in the 2013-14 budget, or in 2013-14, funding for K-12 education is increased to $7.86 billion, up from $7.44 billion in 2012-13. The increase funds more teachers for North Carolina schools, and teacher assistants for kindergarten or first grade are also provided. So I'm trying to reconcile what I'm receiving from the governor with what you're telling me is the consequence at our district.
I agree. There are some numbers that are floating around that certainly don't, that are confusing. We did receive a reconciliation of the media numbers that are going around to what we can comprehend and understand here at our school level. And so I'm gonna hit a couple of those highlights to help you. With the increase that's indicated in the governor's report, that's a 4.8% increase, it includes the state retirement increase contribution, it includes the hospitalization cost. The one that's probably most surprising to me is that it includes the 1.2% pay increase that was provided to teachers and public school personnel in fiscal year 1213, but was never placed in the school fund at that time. So now it's placed in there, and so now it's an increase to the budget. And so that was the most interesting one to me. There are several other things. So they restored a $72 million line items for items that were overspent. So things like longevity, workers' comp, and unemployment, all of those things we spent last year, they just weren't budgeted for last year. And so those items were placed into the budget, which now it looks like we have an increase in funding. And we know, we feel, that we do not have an increase in funding. We're feeling a shortage in the pain from that. So I'm glad to send you the detail on this, but I just thought I'd hit some of the highlights. There certainly is a discrepancy and confusion in the numbers.
Sounds like the spin doctors were working overtime in Raleigh.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Harrison, you ready to go?
Yes, sir. And I suspect that the spin doctors in Raleigh were taking cues from the spin doctors in Washington from some of the same budgetary tactics, is a guess. Just a quick question, your reply back to Chairman Schu. We currently, we are currently updating that number for the 2013-14 year. Many principals eliminated the lead positions, lead teacher positions, and converted them back to TAs for 1314, which is 20 teacher assistant positions. Is that in the 22 TAs or the 21 that have already been rehired? Where is that?
We did...
Or has the dust settled yet on that?
We did finalize that number during the day. So that number, the number that we have, eight lead teacher positions converted from 20 teacher assistant positions, that comes out of the 116. So we have 116, but 20 of those are converted. We literally have 96 TAs in the classroom.
I'm reading it. I'm so sorry. Thank you. And you included my comment about policy and how to address principals' discretion for those positions, when that's more of a long-term consideration for the policy committee. And I look forward to, you know, thorough kinda discussion of that, and whether or not it's appropriate, being an HR, in effect, decision whether or not to address that in policy. But I'd like to codify or formalize that kind of responsibility and accountability that principals have to make that kinda decision, if we could do it possibly through policy. But I'll talk to you in more detail later on. But again, asking if you can prepare information to us for that suggestion, please.
I'll certainly work with Ms. Motley or Mr. Enrico.
And again, I'm not saying that it is necessarily appropriate. I'm just asking your complete review of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter, you wanna continue with your...
I'm gonna actually go back to the state budget. And I personally was very, very disappointed here that the state does not wanna give our teachers any increase whatsoever, and what message that sends, that teachers aren't important to the state, anyway. And I see here how, you know, our county has, when we were talking to them, approved a 1.5% increase. And I see down here, we have a recommendation that says increase the supplements 1.5%. Is that money, is that the money you're thinking about using for some type of an increase to our teachers?
We are giving teachers a 1.5% increase to their supplements. We cannot impact their pay, their real pay from, their monthly pay from the state. But what is within the local government to modify is their supplements, and they did give us 1.5% increase to their supplements. It's not much, but it is something, and we will do that.
Well, this shows that we think they're important. I hear these stories of teachers quitting to go work at fast food or something. Good teachers, long period of time, and we hate to lose those people. If there's anything we can do, I guess this is something. I support that.
Mr. Chairman.
Just a point of clarification. I have heard a local state representative, area state representative, say that this was a, or is a biennial budget, and that there will be, or already would have been, salary increases in the 2014-15 budget. So if that's accurate, and I don't know that it is, I wish we could clarify our statements that there were no salary increases this year, which there weren't. But if the Raleigh budget process is on a biennial basis in which salaries occur every other year, I would appreciate any clarification that you can offer on that. Each time we talk about there not being a salary increase this year seems possibly to not address the fact that this was a biennial budget, whatever that, you know, actually entails.
The budget for 1415, the pay increase that is spoken about, I'm gonna just read you, it's part of the Excellent Public Schools Act, and there's pay for excellence, and it says, "on hold until a robust evaluation instrument and process accurately assesses and evaluates the effectiveness of a teacher."
So that's a conditional, it's not across the board?
There is a committee. It's, I believe, it's eight or nine members recommended by maybe the head of the Senate and also the House together that are working on that. I can tell you that there has been some discussion among HR leads that we would like to be sure that school districts are involved in those discussions, so that we can be sure to bring the perspective of the district into those discussions.
Okay. Ms. Carpenter, you have some comments?
Are you gonna skip me?
Well, you done spoke one time. Let me tell you...
I thought everybody was gonna get to speak again.
Let's get Ms. Carpenter away. I'll come back to you, Blake.
He wants to skip.
No, you go ahead. You hadn't spoke yet. I wanna hear what those questions you've been reserving.
No, you don't. You really don't. Well, mine, the questions that basically, and I know that she probably took this in the back of mind if she doesn't wanna remember, but you remember, you said there was $200,000 that was one-time money, and you said we wouldn't talk about it, that after we'd wait till after the budget was possibly passed, and you said that's one-time money. You know, you don't wanna use that one-time money because, and you said that roughly $25,000 pays for a TA. You remember what I'm talking about?
No, it's vague.
It's vague. Well, the times come now.
It is vaguely familiar, Ms. Carpenter.
And if we got $200,000, I know you don't like to use one-time money, but that could bring, if it's around $200,000, that could bring us maybe 25. Yeah, that would be, one, two, three, four. That could be eight more, maybe. And I'm not, usually, I don't like to mess with fund balance. I don't like to mess with one-time money. But to me, if I can bring on eight more TAs, I would bring on eight more TAs, because I know how important it is. I really do. They are a very, very important factor. They are a very, very important factor. Another thing, I mean, we are desperate. I really feel that. I've seen how important they are. Another thing, and I may be hind and quartered for saying this, but we do have some assistant principals that already do this, and that's go in the classroom and teach. And we have that, a perfect example of that at Wyancoph. And if we can't get TAs back in the classroom, we may have to ask our assistant principals to go back into classroom to teach, if we can't get somebody else to do it at our elementary levels. Because we have got to do something. And we are paying, they're certified, and this is, and somebody said, "Oh, they're administrators." Yes, they are, but they're certified. And if we've got to have someone in those classrooms, if we, you know, it's already been said, one TA for, what do we say? We've got 109 kindergarten classrooms, 110 first graders. And if we've got one TA for all those classrooms, something's got to give. Somebody's got to do it. I've gotten numerous emails talking about what all these teachers have got to do, and something's got to give. Something's got to give. Either you're going, we're going to have to put up some, and we have only got, you know that, we've only got so much money to do, so something's got to give. Either we're going to have to, the people are, the parents are looking at us, the money has not come, and the children are here, and we're going to have to do something. So that's what I'm saying.
Let me address your first comment about the $200,000 additional. There are quite a number of variables that we need to consider, that I need to consider, and that I need to make you aware of when you are adopting the budget. So there are still items and factors that we're not certain of. The allotments, as we receive them, do not have a deduction for NCVPS, in North Carolina Virtual Public Schools, that our students participate in. That deduction comes later. So those numbers that I'm giving you aren't hardcore numbers. We're still going to have deductions from them for NCVPS. We're also going to have deductions for charter schools. And we know, we have an idea of what that number is, but we do not know what that number's going to be right now. We also do not have our final ADM numbers. So the state gives our allotment based on projected numbers. If we're 100 off, then DPI is going to take that money back. So those are all things that I need to be thinking about when I'm planning a budget. And $200,000 on a $150 million budget isn't much at this point, so we have to be prepared. We also know that our class sizes are so tight and so close to the maximums, that if we have 10 students move in at the Cox Mill area, we may have to put a teacher in in October. We may have to put five teachers in at the second semester, and I have to have dollars to do that. So I can't spin that $150 million budget down to nothing, although I know you want to. But we have to be prepared, because it would be extremely difficult for Kathy to have to put a riff in force in October, November, December, so that we could maintain our maximums, stay with under the maximums, because we have to cut other positions. We would not want to cut, put teacher assistant positions there and then know in October, November, December, that we have to riff them, because we have to hire a teacher. We do not want our budget that tight.
Ms. Carpenter, does that answer your question?
Yeah. Well, one of the things, if we do that, I mean, and what I've heard out in the general public is, you know, we've got to look, we've got to think about the classroom. And what I'm hearing from the general public is, we need to look in the classroom, and we've got to look at administr, I mean, you know, clerical, or look at, you know, if we've got clerical, combined clerical, you know, one person can do clerical for two or three people, and if we need to look at things like that, combining clerical stuff, so we can make sure we're doing what we need to do in the classroom. So this is where I'm coming from.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger, you had another comment, question you wanted to bring up?
I did. I just wanted to echo what Mr. Phillips had said, that the difference between a regular TA and an ECTA is vastly different. And I didn't really realize that either, so I'll, you know, don't feel too mad if you think you missed it, because I was a little shaky on that, too. But, and that's what I was trying to ask earlier, but I didn't say it quite as well as Mr. Phillips did, that I would certainly hope when we go back to try to put ECTAs back, that they are from the pool that came out of the EC group, and not from the other pool, because I think they're just, it's two different jobs.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Mr. Barry, you have anything else you want to say?
Well, I was hoping Kathy might respond to that, since we had that conversation.
I'd be happy to respond to that, which is that I have had conversations with principals, and there certainly is recognition of skill sets that ECTAs have, and I'm sure that they will be strongly considered as we move forward.
My questions are, the Title I TAs are a part of the group of TAs, even though you had to protect the, not the person, but the position for Title I. Is that correct?
Yes, it would be part of the total group that were reviewed if there were Title I teacher assistants in the school.
All right, so the 116 TAs that we have includes all the Title I positions? It does not include the Title I positions. Do you happen to have that number on the top of your head?
I do not have that with me tonight. I could certainly get that.
Because I think it would be nice for this, for us to look at the bigger picture of exactly what we're dealing with, especially with the schools that are in Title I situations. The second question is, I understand for your, for non-exempts, that the principals are given some overtime levity to help themselves in, to cover necessary things, to protect the children, and make sure the school runs well. Is that a percentage of their budget, or how do y'all, how do you actually figure the overtime?
For the non-exempt staff, the clerical.
For the non-exempt staff at each of the schools, because I think that's some of the principal's discretion, but you give them some type of an allocation.
We do. Prior to budget cuts over the last several years, we didn't have a good system in place. We allowed schools to make decisions and do overtime as they felt deemed necessary. When we came into budget cuts, we took a really good look, a really good hard look at our overtime, and we decided, we essentially cut the amount of overtime. And then, based on the amount of overtime that was used, we put that in a pot, and we allocated it to the schools the same way we do clerical and custodial, based on the same criteria. So you can have, we, then we charged the schools to either use those overtime dollars or allocations for straight time, because, you know, that's going to be less expensive. And, but they then have the choice, because there are times of the year that are extremely critical for our testing and those types of things. You really can't avoid overtime. So then their managers of their dollars are making decisions that work best for them. So they can either increase a person that works on their staff, or they can use it for overtime allocation, either way.
Okay. Barry, you all clear?
I'm clear.
Okay. Just for maybe a minute or two, my comments on that is, and just as Ms. Clutch had mentioned, you know, we leave a lot of, a lot of the decisions for teacher assistance in the principal's hands. It's their, pretty much their decision who they want to do. I talked to a principal today, a very well-respected principal, she's been around for a while, and I just asked her point-blank, because obviously, this is trouble to me. It's been a very troubling subject for the last four or five months, because teacher assistants do play a vital role in the classroom. And, you know, they give a lot of assistance to the teacher in more ways than just things that we might have thought in the past. But due to all of this, they've awakened us to a lot more than what they do in the classroom. But I just point-blank asked this principal, you know, you, the principal of this school, you're the one that's being held accountable, and to get the numbers, get the grades that you're looking for, and to get the things that we're looking for out of the children. If you had the choice of converting your teacher assistants to lead teachers, what's the consensus? You know, where are you at? And I'm telling you, point-blank, this lady principal told me, she said, "by far the lead teachers." And I'm saying that because the school board has taken a lot of hit over this, over the last four, five, six months. Dr. Shepherd has taken a hit, I've taken the hit, all the emails, which I appreciate all of that. I want everybody to always feel free to voice their opinion about whatever subject it might be, because that's what you elected me for. That's what you elected these other board members for. But I just want to make sure, though, that everyone understands that the principal that's in charge of that school, they have the discretion whether they want teacher assistants, or whether they won't lead teachers. And in some cases, that's the way it was. I looked, we had 19 elementary schools, and I think about 50% of those did lead teacher conversions. But now, some of those, a couple, I don't know how many it is, Ms. Clutz, because you just gave us a number, but some of them, though, have decided, for whatever reason, to bring some of the TAs back, or are they going to trade the lead teachers back for the TAs? Because they felt it was necessary. They felt it was necessary to do that. And then we have to work, as a board, and you, as a finance officer, has to work with the funding that we get from the state in their allotment. Which brings me to another entirely different point here. I want to reiterate what I read in the paper, where Dr. Shepherd had made a statement in the paper, for those of you that might have read it. There's something wrong in Raleigh. There's something wrong in Raleigh when it comes to education. When we put other things in front of education, I think that we're backsliding, because the children are the future of North Carolina. They're the future of Cabarrus County. And if we don't put the funding in the classroom, and we put it in other areas, other than classrooms, then I think that we're shooting ourselves in the foot. Because we'll know, like, I was talking with Dr. Shepherd today, we really won't know the effects of the loss of the teacher assistance in the classroom for three, four years now, because the one that's in kindergarten now, three, four years would be in the third, fourth grade, that type thing. And then we'll see how well they read, how well that they have learned the things that they needed to have learned without a teacher assistant. And so, you know, I realize the importance of it, but I think that the plan that you have recommended, Ms. Clutz, I think is pretty much the only option we really have. We can't afford to give up 111 teachers. And to add to what Ms. Carpenter was talking about, the 200,000, that's one-time money. Bringing them back would be reoccurring. We don't have reoccurring money for that. And then, remember also, the governor's budget is a biennial budget. So it's got 1314 and 1415. And when you did the 10 million there, that is to allow for 1415, without losing positions. So you think that we're losing positions, but, and we are. But it could be a lot worse in 1415 if we don't make provisions for it now. So I commend you with it, and I think that, as far as I'm concerned, we'll, I'll support the resolution that you need to prepare for us in September. Now, board members, that's where we're at at this point. Do we have enough members on this board that's going to support Ms. Clutz's recommendation? Now, if you have any other comments, you can tell me, or you can say that you, we're ready to go along with what she's got, so she can prepare the budget resolution.
Well, I'll jump in. I guess I've tried to just boil it down to fairly simple terms, and I think you just hit it. I mean, I'm not willing to lose 111 teachers. I don't like any of it. I, you know, it's been difficult since May. I still think we did the right thing in May. If everybody else that waited, well, we got a two-month head start on our people trying to figure out what they're going to do, then anybody else that was having to do this. So, but boiled down to those simple terms, I'm just not willing to lose 111 teachers. And when I look at two budget cycles ago, and that was my first one here, and we had to massage the hours and the number, the same administration then that gave us that recommendation, that that worked. I mean, we got through that. It was painful, but that was the right thing to do at the right time. That's the same group that's asking us today, here's where we think we need to go. And we have taken, we've been asked to compete on the statewide level with charter schools, with private schools, and with home schools. And we need to be given the tools to compete. Well, we're having to do with what we have. And you know what? We can gripe all we want, but the bottom line is, we have what we have, and we're going to do the best job that we can with it. And this group, the administration that's sitting in front of us, and the board members that are sitting up here, are going to make the decisions to do that. And in this particular case, I'm of the opinion that this is the right thing to do. I don't, I wish I had it all, but I don't. And so, in that light, I'm okay with whatever tweaks and turns you think you need to do between now and September that we're going to look through. But as the general principle of what you're asking us to approve, I'm okay.
Thank you, Mr. Kiger. Any other board comments? Okay. Is everyone in agreement with the resolution that Ms. Clutz is willing to prepare for us for September? Everybody okay on this end?
I might vote for it.
That's fine. You've got one vote. Barry, you okay?
Well, I would like to get the answer to my question.
I have gotten the answer to it. It's four district-wide, four TAs are Title I funded.
Only four?
I knew it was a small amount, I just didn't know how many, so four.
Because we've got more than that, we've got more schools than that. How does that work?
They can use the funding for a variety of instructional purposes, and that was the decision of the principals and school improvement teams.
Okay, on this side?
Thank you, Kathy.
Everybody okay? Mr. Walter, Mr. Harrison, Mr. Phillips?
I'm wavering. I'm not willing to say I'm in favor of it yet. I want to at least see these numbers to see what the distribution is on the TAs. I want to be convinced that we are truly spreading things around evenly. I also wish we had more flexibility. What I would ideally like to do is just give the principals flexibility and let them adjust class sizes as they see fit. But apparently, the state wants to have it both ways. They want to tell us how many teachers we can have and what the class sizes are, and that doesn't leave us much leeway.
Well, I've always had a saying, Mr. Phillips, and it's still just as true today as it was then. Whoever does the paying, does the saying. And they're the one that does the paying, so they get to do the saying. That's the way it is. But anyway, it looks to Mike, looks to me like, you know, we've got at least five board members that support the resolution, so we need to go ahead and move forward with that. And then when you bring it to us, there'll obviously be more discussion, and then we'll vote on it at that point. Okay? Are we clear? All right. Thank you, Ms. Clutz. I apologize to the other audience that's here tonight for the lengthy, lengthiness of that conversation, but it was one that needed to be had, and so we got that part out of the way, at least for tonight. Our next issue on the agenda tonight is 4.4. This is where we have Dave Burnett and Mr. Mike Miller with ORED to come up and talk to us about the ORED study that we commissioned back last December, I think it was. And Mr. Wiki's going to join them also at the podium. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the introduction. I just wanted to mention that Mr. Tom Cook is also here from ORED to participate in the presentation. As you know, we've been moving towards this for some time. The organization was hired in the spring to begin work with us, to look at where our population is going, to look at where our growth is going as a county, and the impacts of that potentially on the school district and its schools. And so I believe that the presentation you'll see momentarily is one that will be informational, and certainly will be the basis for our making recommendations to the board in the future on school board, school bond issue, and potential new sites for new schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, board members. Thanks for the opportunity to come down and allow me to present some of the findings from our land use study. Let me get this working first. Zero. Trying to make it backwards, it's not at the beginning. Oh, is this a PDF?
It's a PDF.
Okay. My name is Mike Miller. I'm a director at the Operations Research and Education Lab at the Institute for Transportation Research and Education at NC State. And I'm here tonight to talk about the 2012-13 IPSAC land use study. Integrated Planning for School and Community is a data-driven process that allows us to provide tools, planning tools, to districts. And there's several components to this. We'll be discussing three of these tonight. But we're going to be looking at membership forecasting, land use studies with Tom Cook, and out-of-capacity analysis. The Operations Research and Education Lab... The Operations Research and Education Lab, or ORED, has been around for about twenty years, more than twenty years, assisting districts, providing data-driven tools that allow you to make decisions about school siting, about attendance boundaries, about where to buy land to build new schools, and deal with growth. We are part of the Institute for Transportation Research and Education at North Carolina State University. And ORED uses mathematical modeling, decision science applications, and statistical processes to steer districts to make decisions that impact the entire district based on data. So tonight, we're going to look at three topics. We'll look at some background data and trends that the data shows us. Tom Cook will come up and provide some findings from the land use study report. And then we'll finalize this with the presentation of the out-of-capacity table for 2012-13. First of all, some of the background data we're using and looking at shows, generally speaking, that the county exceeds North Carolina historic and projected growth. You're looking at thirty-five, or thirty-three point five percent general population increase over the last ten years, compared to about seventeen percent for the state. Of particular importance is the projected general population increase for the next nine years, or over the next nine years. Thirteen point three percent compared to about ten percent for the state. Now, if we drill down a little bit to more of the school-related populations, these two data, resident live births, or RLBS, and average daily membership, ADM, these two data provide some of the inputs that we use for our forecasting. Generally speaking, the resident live births for the county have been increasing at a rate of about seventeen additional births per year. But you will notice, since 2008, that trend has reversed. It's not enough to take down the general trend, but there is certainly a significant downtrend in recent years for resident live births. Contrary to that, the average daily membership trend over the last six years is increasing by about five hundred and thirty-seven students per year. This is contrary to many districts across the state that we work with that are seeing marked decreases in membership over the last two or three years. So you're bucking the trend for membership in Cabarrus County. Just a little connection, if you just look at nothing but the data, including the resident live birth trend and the membership data, of course, there's a connection between resident live birth trends and the kindergarteners that show up in your classrooms five years later. So if you strictly use the connection between those two trends, they are going to tell us that kindergarteners should decrease over the next three, four years. The land use data that we collected this spring and summer, and some of the other trends that we're looking at, do not support this. We do not think that you're going to see a significant decrease in kindergarteners over the next three or four years. And here's a glance at some of the different forecast models that project out average daily membership over the next ten years. As I said, the traditional cohort models use that resident live birth trend to figure out how many kindergarteners are going to come in over the next five years. And that's why some of those graphs that you see are flattening out. The one that ORED uses is the purple line. I call it the aggressive growth model. This was adopted for the overall forecast, and over the next ten years, we expect an increase of about seventeen percent in K-12 ADM. Taking that aggressive growth forecast and splitting it into levels, you get this graph, which is the elementary, middle, and high level. On the top, you see a blue line, which is elementary. On the very bottom, there is middle school, K through eight, only three grades there. And the red line in the middle is nine through twelve. You can see some dips and some rises in these graphs. That's as cohorts of larger classes and smaller classes move through the system. But the bottom line from this forecast is a gain of over six thousand K-12 students So one of the reasons we felt there was enough evidence to look past the resident live birth trends was some of the data that Tom Cook collected in the land use community interviews. Those interviews are designed to look at key trend indicators, growth factors, how's infrastructure impacting the growth of the county, anticipated non-residential and residential developments, and then we couple this with GIS analysis, which puts numbers to these perceptions. So at the end of the day, what we're looking at is what's the forecasted membership for each school, and which schools will be out of capacity, and when will that occur? And at this point, I'll turn it over to Tom Cook to talk about some of the land use findings.
Thank you, Mike. What I'd like to start by talking about is a couple of other studies that are going on in Cabarrus County at this point in time. One is the Regional Connect Our Future study that's being done in the fourteen-county Charlotte area. It's being conducted by the Central Line of COG and the Catawba Regional COG, and that is going to be completed by the end of 2014. It's building from the Connect Vision that was developed last fall in September, and three of those points from that vision include sustainable and well-managed growth, safe and healthy environment, and strong and diverse economy. It also includes data that was gathered as part of an update to the 2007 Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. And again, I'm sorry, that part was done last September. That data will be folded into the Connect Our Future Plan. There's another study which is ongoing too, which is the Water and Sewer Authority of Cabarrus County, or WASAC, Master Water and Sewer Plan. And that body is forecasting future development and demand for water and sewer service within the county. That study was ongoing at the time of our study. It does apply a growth forecasting model to current conditions, and it's looking at the suitability of parcels within Cabarrus County for development or redevelopment, and it applies allowable land use and development densities to those parcels to arrive at some forecast of potential future development. I think an important point about both of these plans is that they're going to show where development can take place, but again, where it does take place ultimately will be up to developers and property owners. So again, just because development could take place does not necessarily mean that it will take place in all those parcels across the county. In terms of some of the factors that promote or influence growth in Cabarrus County, obviously the strongest would be its proximity to Charlotte, which is a regional growth driver. The county has excellent interstate highway access with interstates eighty-five, four-eight-five, and seventy-seven. UNC Charlotte and the University Research Park also contribute to growth in the county, as well as the research campus in Kannapolis. Some of the factors that constrain or perhaps influence the locations of growth in Cabarrus County would include the presence of soils in the eastern parts of the county that are not conducive to the use of septic systems. So that's going to limit the density of development that can take place in those areas absent provision of municipal sewer service. Another thing is the presence of the regional airport, a quarry, and Lake Dante Howell Reservoir in the western part of the county. Now, again, there is growth that's taking place in western Cabarrus County, but within that particular area, that's a relatively large chunk of land, when put together, that's not going to be available for development. Looking at some of the supporting infrastructure in terms of water and sewer availability, again, the presence of water or sewer either facilitates or constrains where development can take place. Without going into details, I'll just say that in general, what we found from talking with folks at the infrastructure facilities was that there is adequate water supply and water treatment capacity either in place or planned for the future, as well as wastewater treatment capacities. So again, that's not going to be a constraining factor on growth in the county. WASAC is the primary planning agency for water and sewer, and again, it's an independent, incorporated public body. It manages and operates several reservoirs, one water and two wastewater treatment plants. And then each of the municipalities operates their own distribution and collection systems, and in some cases, some treatment facilities as well. And one thing that is going to have an impact on the location of development, or the density of development, would be the lack of municipal water and sewer service extensions in Area A, which is to the east of Concord, as a result of the inter-local agreement that was first executed in 2006 and subsequently modified. Looking at another aspect of supporting infrastructure in terms of transportation, some of the major DOT projects that are impacting the county now would be the widening of I-85, the completion of the I-85 and 485 interchange just across in Mecklenburg County, and the construction of the northeastern quadrant of I-485 running between I-85 and I-77. Again, those are going to facilitate travel and access to Cabarrus County from the Charlotte region and make Cabarrus County a very attractive residential location. Some of the other major projects, again, include highway widenings, interchange improvements, and the extension of the George Lyles Parkway. And then looking at some of the non-residential development, in other words, the commercial or industrial development that's taking place or planned within the county. First, Charlotte is a very important growth driver that's impacting Cabarrus County, and growth within Mecklenburg County is projected at over fifteen percent for this current decade, and that's in aggregate, not annually. Some of the local developments that are taking place include the construction of the aquarium at Concord Mills Mall, the continuing growth of the research campus in Kannapolis, the Corning Fiber Optic Plant in Midland that completed a one-hundred-million-dollar expansion in 2012, the Intermodal Center that's being developed to the west of Midland. Again, one start of that project has taken place, and it's expected to grow over the future. Another would be S&amp;D Coffee, expanding in Concord with an expectation of about four hundred additional employees coming to that company. Some other potential development would be the Philip Morris property. Again, a very large piece of real estate with huge potential in terms of future redevelopment. The area near the Concord Regional Airport has seen some industrial growth, and that's expected to continue there, as well as office development in the area near Concord Mills Mall. And then finally, there's an expectation for continued commercial growth and development in the areas where the interchanges with I-85 occur. At this point, I'm going to turn things back over to Mike, who's going to blend findings from land use study interviews, as well as the GIS analysis.
Thank you, Tom. The purpose behind our GIS analysis is to look in depth at some of the residential subdivisions and developments that we see across the county, and try to better understand how the students that are coming out of those subdivisions can impact your school district. We considered more than ninety residential development sites, single-family apartments, townhomes. And the goal here is to look at the number of developed units, lots, how many are possible to be developed, and, most importantly, the student generation ratio, which tells us the number of students that are coming from that particular subdivision per lot. I will mention that what we're going to look at tonight on the slideshow here is just a representative of some of the data that we collected. A full, comprehensive list of the residential analysis occurs in the written report, and I would encourage you to read that for the complete story. But here's a sample of some of the residential developments that we looked at and analyzed. The Farms at Riverpoint, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five units. At the time of the community interviews, two-hundred-and-sixty were developed. We now understand that there's a possibility of a similar development to the north of the Farms, something like five-hundred homes, sorry, four-hundred homes to the north of that. Waterford on Rocky River, two-hundred-and-sixty-six units, twenty-four developed at the time of the interviews. Castle Brook Manor, two-hundred units, not developed at the time. Wellington Chase, two-hundred-and-ninety-two, one-hundred-and-three developed. Pelham Point, one-hundred-and-sixteen units, thirteen developed. Moving down a little more south, Villages at Skybrook North, four-hundred-and-sixty-seven, one-hundred-and-thirty developed, a lot of room still left there. Crescent Apartments and Afton Ridge Apartments, five-hundred-and-eighty and ninety-six units, respectively. We understand that Afton Ridge is now ready to be occupied. At least several of the units are ready to be occupied. Brookview and Crystal Creek, three-hundred units, none developed at the time of the interviews. Edison Square, Winding Walk, with one-hundred-and-seventy and four-hundred-and-seventy-two total units. And the last slide, a little further south, Bexley Village Apartments, three-hundred-and-twelve units in the first phase, anyway, zero developed. Jacobs Landing Townhomes, one-hundred-and-fifty units, none developed, and we understand that there's three-hundred-and-sixty apartment units pending for that. The Mills at Rocky River, this is one of the bigger players, twelve-hundred units total, eight-hundred-and-fifty single-family plus three-hundred-and-fifty multifamily, with very few developed so far. Bridge Point with two-hundred units and sixty-seven developed. So this is, once again, just a sample of the kind of data we collect to try to figure out the impact on the district. The student generation ratio is a calculation we make on a subdivision level. For example, this particular development here has one-hundred-and-thirty single-family lots, of which one-hundred-and-nineteen are developed, and yielding forty-six K-12 students. So the student generation ratio there is about point four students per lot. Contrasting that is this development, which is a little higher density, four-hundred-and-thirty single-family lots, of which four-hundred are developed, generating two-hundred-and-ninety students. So you see a student generation ratio that is much higher in that subdivision. And going back to the development that we understand is possible to the north of the Farms, we were looking at four-hundred homes, and I did some side analysis on the Farms, and there's basically two distinct areas there. The more high-density area has a student generation ratio of point eight, and the lower-density has a student generation ratio of point five-five. So we think between those two numbers, that could measure the impact of what we're looking at up at that northern development. And by the way, probably the most impactful number is the countywide, single-family student generation ratio is point five-five. So as a general rule of thumb, that's a good number you can use to look at single-family impact on your school districts. Apartment buildings, apartment complexes, townhomes, they all differ greatly depending on the demographic that they're trying to attract, but single-family ones, we have the data there to be a little, we can compare a planned subdivision to something that's already in place, and hopefully get an idea of the impact. Well, the analysis ends up with the out-of-capacity table. This is the culmination of the demographic trends we saw at the beginning, residential potential, and finally, we add in school facility utilization, the capacity, how many seats that school can hold. And what's being distributed right now is the latest and greatest version of the out-of-capacity And what's being distributed right now is the latest and greatest version of the out-of-capacity So while you're looking at that, you'll notice some assumptions on the top, top four or five lines there. Let me briefly go over that. Every forecast has to have some type of assumptions to tell you how we generated these numbers. And some of the things that were unknown at the time of this forecast. Charter school impact, we do have a charter school impact opening K-5 this fall, and the assumption for this forecast, and this is our working assumption, that those seats will be filled by that charter school. They're adding a grade of 100 students, or 100 seats, I should say, thereafter. So the forecast takes out those students from the system. If you look down about midway through the table, you'll see Cabarrus Charter Academy, K-5, and those are the numbers that have been decreased from the system-wide forecast. Magnet program impact. We also adjusted individual, system-wide schools based on magnet programs that we understand are coming online. We used some analysis based on proximity and where, we got some input from the district itself about what schools we believe will be impacted, but remember, that's largely to do with the parents' choice about magnet schools. So we tried to formulate some of that impact in this table, but once again, it's one of those things that we can make an assumption, but it's largely unknown. Of course, the timing of the residential turnaround, we're seeing a lot of signs here. We work with a lot of districts through the state and out of state, and this is one of the strongest evidence of turnaround that we've seen. There's a lot of things happening here, and that's one of the reasons that we felt that we needed to look at an aggressive growth curve for the county. Exactly when that's going to come around full tilt, nobody knows, but all the signs are there, and the undeveloped lots and the permitting activity give us evidence that it's right around the corner. One of the more difficult things to estimate is build out timelines. So if you know a subdivision is going online, and how many units it has, how long does it take to be built out? Well, we looked at some of the ones that we could, from the history, looking at parcel data, and tried to estimate comparable subdivisions in our forecast. So that is a large unknown, and I'll be the first to say that, but we did use some of the history that we found in the county to try to help us measure that. So let me explain the out-of-capacity table. On your presentation, you will notice that it says draft, the numbers are identical. I just removed the word draft, so you're looking at a final version now. As you move from left to right in the columns, the capacities that we used are listed in the first column. We did not include pre-K in this forecast, so keep that in mind as you look at some of these capacities. Of course, Month 1, that is measured by NCDPI data, and it is ADM data. And then moving to the right is the individual membership, ADM, for the school. The color coding is, there's a legend down on the bottom, less than 95% is green, yellowish is between 95 and 100, orange is 100 to 105, and red is larger than 105. Some of these things are more red than other reds, so you might want to look at the data a little closer, and some of these things are a little bit greener than green, too. System-wide, on the very bottom there, I will call your attention to one thing. You'll see the line CCS system totals, those do not include charter school membership. That's the schools that we have on the ground today through the next 10 years. And I'll also make one more remark on this. This chart is based on 2012 attendance lines, 2012 attendance lines. So that's about the end of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
Thank you, Mike. Board members, as you know, we've already seen this, some of us have seen it twice, but we still want to offer you the opportunity to ask questions. And since we started on Mr. Phillips' side last, we'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side this time. And while he's preparing, I'd like to make just a general comment in reference to the out-of-capacity table. Mike, I'm assuming that the reason that the Pitt School Road Elementary is going from the red area to the green area is because of the magnet school at Patriots?
Yes, sir.
Is that what it is?
Yes. There might be some charter influence on that one also.
And, of course, Cox Mill is staying in the red the whole time, but it looks like, you know, the only one really come out of it, though, of the red, was Pitt School, and like I said, that's due to the magnet at Patriots.
And once again, those are assumptions, the best we can figure out where parents are going to choose to center kids.
Right. Obviously, it'll fluctuate depending on what the parents do.
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. Mr. Schumaker, are you ready?
You mentioned that there was a study with WASAC going on due in September. Will you be comparing any of your data to their study, or is that?
It's a little bit apples and oranges. Let me tell you how we used the data. What they do is look at a parcel-level database to find suitability for development. So they allowed us to use that parcel level, and that's how we were able to identify individual parcels that are for single-family, for example, or multifamily, or non-student generating. So the good thing about it is, these forecasts will be consistent with the kinds of forecasts and numbers you see with the WASAC, and they matched our analysis anyway. We did independent analyses, compared them. Their parcel database was better than ours, is more complete and more accurate, we felt. So we use that as our foundation for the parcel analysis.
Did you, and I'm not sure of all what your scope was, but in your scope, were you looking at any kind of transportation bottlenecks or issues that we will have in the upcoming 10 years? Obviously, you know, we have a lot of developments going up, but I think they're going to tax our transportation, and I wondered if you all had a chance to look at that, or was that something a part of your scope?
We didn't look at potential future bottlenecks. We did look at the TIP, the Transportation Improvement Plan, to see what improvements are planned and in the pipeline at this point. That's really what we're going on, and also, we did speak with NC DOT staff members.
So how detailed did those TIPs get? I mean, were they just at the major-level highways, or did we get down to some secondary roads?
They've got the secondary roads. They also have a host of bridge replacements, and basically, I didn't go into detail on that either.
Will that be covered in the, so you didn't?
There is more information in the report.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Cartman, do you have any more questions, concerns? Mr. Keiger, questions?
Just to brief, you'd mentioned this is based on 2012 attendance lines, and I just would like, if it's not too difficult to massage, and this is probably more Lynn and Dave, if we can get, since we went through a redistricting and we've got some, you know, fresher data, I'd like to see that. It may, you know, the big picture really doesn't, what you're telling us and what we're seeing doesn't really change, but I'd like to at least see those numbers broken out in the future.
I understand, yes, yeah.
And then the other thing is, does it make any sense, if we know Patriots is a magnet school, so at some point in time, the population's going to grow to the seats, and we're going to have a choice whether, you know, we're going to have to decrease the magnet seats available, you know, there's a tipping point there somewhere, and I think we probably need to have some sort of line of demarcation here of where we hit that, because at some point, we're not going to be able to offer that, or we're going to have to tell people that live in the district they got to go somewhere else. And I don't think we want to, well, I'm not going to speculate on what we would or wouldn't want to do then, but that's a mark we probably need to know, and I didn't really look at culture web, but it's got the same thing, and we need to show the same thing.
Yes, typically, that's how we would handle a magnet program, is if it's a popular magnet, of course, it goes in for a while, and then it's capped. And so we calculate it as being flat from that point onwards. But of course, that's a policy decision on how you want to cap that. Yeah. We can certainly update these to match that.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger.
We did our presentation earlier. Dave had come up with a group, I guess grouping by area?
Yes.
Is that chart available?
What we have to do is, we do have to compare the numbers on this, and they shouldn't have changed, but that's not part of their presentation, so it's not.
That wasn't part of the scope, that was something you had done?
Yes.
Because his chart had showed exactly where all this growth was, pretty clearly, up in the north.
Northwest is the hotspot, yes.
Is this report, are we going to look at these areas in red, and we can go back into the book and see what the subdivisions are that are, is that shown?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, in detail in the book, you'll see it's broken down by municipal area, I believe. Correct.
And you said you have or haven't compared it to other studies that have been done, because the county did a study, and they presented it to the county commissioners about six months ago, or less than that.
You're talking about the Urban Institute study?
Yes, and their study shows, you know, potential of 17,000 lots that are available built on, which was, I guess, using your numbers, is like 9,000. Kids, I would think that would be much more aggressive growth projection than the one you have.
The issue is, that's, the forecasting methods are, that isn't so much of a forecast, is that's a point in space. They didn't try, at least the report I read, did not try to simulate any kind of.
It didn't have a timeline to it.
It did not have a timeline, yeah. And even though it's two different methodologies, I think there's not a reason to feel that they're inconsistent. I think the total number of children that they were talking about in that worst-case scenario, as they called it, was something like 10,000? And we're looking at, right?
I think it was similar to the number you had, .55 or something to that.
Yeah, I think so. And so we're talking about a 10-year forecast window of 6,000 children, and so I think those two magnitudes are comparable.
I did have another one, but I've lost my notes, so I'll pass on to David.
We'll come back to you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison?
And it seems like we need to add some additional local data, and I think I've generally mentioned the need to get the actual number of permits that have been issued at each of these developments, which I know is our duty to massage those calculations. But of course, where there are 150 units, but zero have been developed as of your latest data, I would like to know what the trends are in those areas, which, again, I think, I presume would fall to our staff to pull that together. And I guess I would do want to go back to a point that one of your early graphs made, where the population increase in Cabarrus County is 33.5% in.
That was over 10 years.
Over 10 years.
Yes, sir.
Our population in that period has grown a third?
Yes, sir. That's historical data, so that's real numbers right there. Yeah.
Gracious me. But the few slides down, the resident live births are going down, are we in effect talking about Cabarrus County becoming the Florida of North Carolina? Are there more retirement-type people here, or single-child people coming in, or just the economy, or what is leading to an increase in population but a decrease in resident live births?
It boils down to in-migration. When you have the kind of residential potential that we're seeing in here, and proximity of growth centers like Charlotte, it boils down to in-migration.
But the bottom line still is, by about 2020 or 2022, an additional 6,000 students, give or take, in Cabarrus County. Okay. All right. Thanks for the great work.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips?
Okay. Yes, thanks for coming down this evening and explaining to this, explaining this to us, and I also thank Rob for doing some extra little research to see what some of the other studies did, and it's, I guess, it's not comforting to know, but it's important to know that there's at least another study that's saying that you may be on the low side. So, yikes. Just a couple of reactions I did have of the results. I'm a little surprised that there's not more growth being shown on the eastern side of the county, particularly in the Harrisburg area, you know, so schools like Harrisburg Elementary are not going to be in the red, at least during your period, Pitt School Road, only in the final year. I was, just based on some of those developments that you were showing that were out there, I was expecting to see that that might be more. So that was maybe a little bit good news. On the bad news side, I'm surprised to see as much red as there is on the high schools. I was hoping we were in good shape there, considering that we built two since I moved here in 2004, but apparently, that's not going to be enough. And, well, I guess, I would say, given that we can't build everything at once, and that there are some schools that are green at the same time that others are red, everyone should be forewarned that enrollment lines will be shifting sometime in the next three to four years. There's no other way we can do this. That's a word of caution to everyone. Enrollment lines will be shifting in the next three to four years. Okay, now I have some specific questions for you. One was, so you're showing all of our existing buildings going out for the next 10 years. Did you, I assume your study did not look at the condition of our existing buildings to see whether they could last another 10 years? No, sir, we did not. Okay. So if, for instance, we come to the conclusion that our older buildings just can't make it, then, and we have to take them out of this, then all the others get really red.
It's a lot more red.
So I think that's another thing that we need to consider. The second is that you listed what some of the uncertainties are in your analysis, and I appreciate that, because that gives us a sense that, okay, there's, you know, the numbers may not be accurately, you know, they might not be exact, but at least it gives us the trends. But what I'm wondering about is, what is the level of uncertainty that might be there? For instance, let's just take one school, Central Cabarrus High School. It shows it's going to be turning red going over capacity in 2016. Could that be wrong by one year in either direction, or by three years?
It could be wrong by one or two years either direction, I think, especially as you go into the higher grades, then you're relying on data that's already inside the system. If you look at what's happening in Central, those students are feeding through already. They're in there, and of course, there's in-migration.
Right.
But I think the higher you go, the more reliable those kinds of numbers are.
Okay. So it's probably at the elementary school where it's a little more of a.
Yes, sir. Especially when we're looking at the magnet program. The biggest uncertainty right now is probably the magnet slash charter impact.
Right, right, yeah.
Those are very difficult to drive.
I realize, when you presented this before to us, that it's like, wow, the charter school helps, and it hurts. It helps because it's adding additional seats to the county, but it hurts in terms of planning, because we don't know where these children are going to be coming from. So, and then my final question for you, and I have one for Mr. Whitkey, is, does your model account for the changes in the student generation ratio as a neighborhood ages? And I'll just give my personal lot as an example. Three years ago, my SGR was three. This year, it's two. Three years from now, it'll be zero.
That's right. Yes, for the first four or five years, these numbers are actually generated on a subdivision level. So you will see subdivisions that have a lot more high schoolers than they have elementary schools. That's figured into the model. Something that's not figured in, because the time span really doesn't allow it, is what we call turnover. So when those older populations graduate high school, how soon is it until another population reinvigorates that subdivision, so to speak? We feel like this is. We feel like this is a kind of a short window to look at those kinds of questions, but turnover is not included, but aging out is.
Okay. Then my final question is for Mr. Whitkey, and that is, what is the earliest date we could build a new school and have it in service?
Do I get to say the caveat is we have the money?
Yeah, yeah, assuming that the money becomes available, and we know how plentiful it is, so.
I mean, in reality, if we're talking about an elementary school as an example, I think it's realistic to say you can build an elementary school in sixteen months, and that's reasonable. The planning of it, you know, purchase of the land, acquisition of utilities, information and all, I'd say two and a half to three years is about what the timeline typically is. And two and a half would be very aggressive, three would be more common. And you're sitting to a fellow, next to me, that's built a lot more than I have, so. And Dave, I guess, would you agree, or?
I would agree. It also depends on the level. If it's a high school, of course, the construction period's going to be longer.
All right. So we're probably, yeah, assuming that there's a bond election next year, then if we go two and a half years after that, it's looking like it's probably 2017, 18 would be the first year that that school would open, and so we have to look at, you know, how many things are in the red in that year, and there's quite a few.
Yes, sir.
So we're already behind schedule.
And just to fuel the discussion, something that Mike Downs, county manager, mentioned in a meeting recently was, and it really surprised me, he said that the county is currently experiencing permitting at a rate equal to what they saw in 2008, one of the boom years in the county. So things are not quiet by any means, it only supports what Mike and Tom have been saying, and it's, I think, going to be certainly more noticeable as we proceed forward, so. Thank you.
And let me just interject, at that, I was in that meeting when he said that, and it was this ORED presentation, so our county manager has seen the data that we just saw. And the other thing that's interesting, as you were laying out dates, even if a bond passes next year, we don't get that money till 16. So you, you know, you have to factor that into your timeline of, so seventeen's a no. I think it's eighteen is the soonest that we have. If I under, you know, I don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but that's what he said at our, the ORED presentation meeting.
We better get ready to rent a bunch of modeler classrooms in.
Thank you, board members, and thank you, Mike, Tom, Lynn, for all the hard work you did on this. I won't go into a lot of detail. It's a good report. One of the things that I noticed right off the bat when we seen this for the first time is you guys basically confirmed a lot of what we already knew.
Yes, sir.
And you put the numbers just like what we thought, and so you put credibility to what we were doing, and we appreciate that, you know, from a third-party, non-biased entity. Now we have something concrete to work with, and the big question is, is how soon we can get some schools built? And it looks to me like, sort of like what Mr. Keiger just said, and also, Mr. Phillips, it's going to be 2017 at the absolute best before we can do an elementary school. And if you look at this chart here that you've provided for us, we're going to have a number of schools way over in the red by then.
Yes, sir.
And then, you know, you can't just plan for one when you've got four or five behind you. We've done been there, done that, and we slowly pulled it out and done fairly well, you know, but we're back up to a tremendous amount of mobile units, and it looks like we're going to have to buy some more before we get 2017, a new school open. And that's if the voters support it in May, if we can get it worked out for a May bond referendum. So. But anyway, once again, thank you for the report, gentlemen. I appreciate you being here.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, Mr. Schumaker. Yes, absolutely.
When we commissioned this study, there was an opportunity to revisit the study. In your history of doing studies like this, how frequently do you revisit your studies, especially on the heels of hearing that our permitting is going up, and if the recovery begins to take some speed, then we could see these numbers change pretty dramatically?
We typically do standard updates every year, and that includes gathering that kind of permitting data. The community interview would, what I would call a full update, and that we typically say for a high-growth area like this, you know, two to three years, unless we see signs that these reversals are not taking place, no longer than three years.
So don't wait any longer than three years, but probably sooner than.
Yes, sir.
One to two years.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks again, gentlemen. Before we move on to our next item, 4.5, I need to give the cameraman about a half a second to get their disc changed over, and then we'll pick rock back up, and while they're doing that, we can get Ms. Donna Smith to the podium.